Good evening, everyone. So great to see you all. I'm Rob Anderson. I have the honor of being superintendent here in the Boulder Valley School District and welcome to the superintendent's honor role. So excited that you're here with us this evening and we're excited to celebrate your outstanding achievements, both of our students, staff, and community. We have a lot of folks here. We have a lot of people to celebrate and just very, very excited to do that. It's just been too long, right, that we've been able to have this event. It's been two years since we've been able to host the superintendent's honor role. We typically do this every semester and the last time we did this was December 2019, which was eight years ago. Feels like it, right? Just a short time before COVID-19. And so after what I know was a very challenging year in our community with many ups and downs, couldn't be happier to resume this event that honors outstanding students and staff from the Boulder Valley School District. So I am going to get started. In a moment, our Board of Education will be joining us. They're finishing up their meeting, but just can't say enough great things about our Board of Education, how they've led our district through these trying times and so very, very excited. When they are here, I'll stop and I'll introduce them so everybody knows who's here. Really appreciate all of their leadership. So our first honorees are Diego and Emiliano. If you all want to start heading up this way, Boulder Valley School District recognizes how powerful and important bilingualism is for our students, which is why we're planning to expand our bilingual programs in the future. We hope to offer a pathway for students to build their expertise in Spanish and English from preschool through their senior year of high school. And while we're also promoting the seal of bilinguism as one of the four areas of our new Graduation Plus initiative, which is very exciting, this is initiative which aims to better prepare our graduates for life after high school. And we know and understand that being bilingual is a huge asset for our students. But we know that this starts at a very young age. It's why we want to celebrate some outstanding achievements. A suela bilingual pioneer student Emiliano de la Torre won the Colorado Association for Bilingual Education's Proud to Be Bilingual Contest. Round of applause for Emiliano. And Diego, who's a Manhattan middle schooler and former pioneer student, recently took first place at the Colorado Spanish Bee Contest. Yep, you're gonna have to clap for him again because listen to this. He'll be traveling to the National Spanish Spelling Bee in Texas this July. Congratulations, Diego and Emiliano. Congratulations. Off to a strong start. What do you think? Wonderful. Tonight, we'd like to honor and celebrate some of our educators who've been working to ensure that students from our Latino Hispanic community are properly identified as gifted and talented and that they receive the appropriate resources to support their learning needs. Will Dr. Carlota Loyah Hernandez from Boulder Universal and Dr. Michelle Dubois from BVSD Gifted and Talented please come on up? So the leading expert in this field, Dr. Jamie Castellano, recently recognized 16 of the leaders in this important work for the National Association for Gifted Children. And Carlota and Michelle were honored to be on the list, two of 16. That's incredible. Their work in advocating for culturally and linguistically diverse gifted students started more than a decade ago at Columbine Elementary. And I'm sure it's been quite a journey. 2021, you've both been asked to present at the first ever National Symposium on Equity for Black and Brown Students by the National Association for Gifted Children and have published books on the topic. And I think I saw... What's an award show without some props, right? So here we go. This is their book, Supporting Gifted ELLs in the Latinx Community: Practical Strategies K-12 on Education. I'm sure you can grab that on Amazon if you're interested. And just very, very excited and proud of Carlota and Michelle. Thank you both for your leadership in this area. Round of applause. So as I shared with you, you know, the pandemic held this event off for a couple of years so that our next honoree will be somebody that won an award in 2021. So if Amy Powell Rogers could come on up. Amy, where are you at? Amy was recognized as the 2021 COBELL enterprising Teacher of the Year. The COBELL enterprising Teacher of the Year Award celebrates exemplary teachers in the area of economics and financial literacy. The winner got a $200 check.
$2,000.
$2,000!
Extra zero.
Extra zero, very good. Amy's been teaching economics at Fairview High since 2001 and started the school's ABIB economics program in 2006. Has grown the program from 40 students at the beginning to more than 200 now. She's helped support other teachers in BVSD in growing and strengthening their programs. Amy, we're proud of you. Let's give her a hand. Congratulations. Let me take a picture. Next up is an award from the National Scholastic Press Association. In the middle of the pandemic, schools were struggling with students whose cameras were off during remote learning. Anybody remember that? Students remember that? Any of you have like pictures of yourself that you put on camera? You would never admit that. I know that. This is an award ceremony. But if you did, and you got away with it, there you go. Will Lilly Weisbart and Sam Saliba come on up? So Lilly and Sam won the National Scholastic Press Association's Best Broadcast Commentary at the national level for their video titled Seeing Things. It's comedic look into one student's debate about whether they should overcome peer pressure and turn their camera on. Congratulations Lilly and Sam. Great job. For our next honoree, you don't have to walk into the science classroom at Case Middle School to know that great learning is happening there. You simply need to follow @AaronSMyer on Twitter. She regularly shares glimpses into her students' explorations. Aaron, why don't you come on up? Using a model called three-dimensional learning, which is tied to the next-generation science standards, instead of just pouring knowledge on students about energy transfer, the students drive the investigation themselves. And that results in igniting students' passion for learning. Aaron's work hasn't gone unnoticed. This year, she was recognized by the International Space and Engineering Fair and the Society for Science for Mentoring Students. She's one of 66 stellar educators chosen for the Advocate Program, receiving a $3,000? Not 30,000, $3,000? Okay, we just make... You miss zeros once. She just wanted to double check. Receiving a $3,000 stipend to continue her work encouraging underrepresented students to compete in STEM projects and competitions. Congratulations, Aaron. So proud of you. So glad you came. Take a picture. Okay, so I am very proud and happy to announce that our Board of Education members are now here in the back. I'd invite them to walk up and sit here in the front as I call their names, or they can stay back there, but I'm gonna recognize you and say your names. So our President Kathy Gephardt, wave Kathy. Vice President Lisa Sweeney-Moran. Treasurer Nicole Rajapal. Richard Garcia. Beth Niznik. Kitty Sargent. And Stacy Ziss. Big round of applause for our Board of Education. Back to the awards. So speaking of the Society of Science, which I was speaking about before I introduced the board members, annually, they recognize outstanding high school students through the Regeneron Science Talent Search, the nation's oldest and most prestigious science and math competition for high school seniors. Fairview High School once again had a representative in the 300 scholars from across the country that were chosen. Will Jason Quee come on up? Jason was chosen from more than 1,800 applications. Scholars are chosen based on their exceptional research skills, commitment to academics, innovative thinking, and promise as scientists, as demonstrated through the submission of their original independent research projects. Jason started his research as a sophomore in Fairview's Science Research Seminar class, which is an incredible experience for our kids, and focused on how diet can affect Alzheimer's disease progression, testing food preservatives. COVID did have an impact, closing down the CU lab that he was using for some of his work, but ultimately, he persevered and found some really interesting results. Congratulations, Jason. Let's give him all, one more round of applause. Hey, Jason, we'll take a picture over here. That's awesome, man. Congratulations. As you may or may not know, every year, different members of the U.S. House of Representatives across the country, including our own Congressman Joe Nagus, participate in the Congressional App Challenge, where students submit different apps they've created in an effort to promote students' learning coding and computer science. Let's have Aditya Najal and Yosha and Avanti Gautam come on up. Aditya, from Peak to Peak Charter Schools app, has two parts calculating a person's ecological footprint, as well as allowing folks to enter household items to see if they're recyclable. People can check back after they've made changes to see if they've improved their environmental footprint. How cool is that? And Peak to Peak sophomores Yosha and Avanti Gautam took second place with their app called AI Apprentice, an interactive game that teaches about artificial intelligence through social issues. Round of applause. Congratulations. We're now going to honor some of our BVSD tennis champions. And so that's a subtle clue to go get the champions from the other room. This past Saturday, the Colorado Girls Tennis State Tournament was held at the Gates Tennis Center in Denver. We are pleased to share that we have a couple of BVSD Colorado State Champions. Let's have Lilly Chitambhar from Boulder High School and Fairview's double team Jane Roth and Maya Brackage come on up. Jane and Maya won the number-two doubles match, and I understand Fairview battled Cherry Creek several times throughout the day, and you guys were the ones that beat them, as Cherry Creek went on to win the state, the team state championship. And you came back from behind to earn a commanding three-set victory, 1-6, 6-3, 6-4. Is that right? That's how you do it. Awesome. Congratulations. And... That's right. At any point, if you don't know what to do, just start clapping. Everybody will join you. It'll be, it'll be a great way to celebrate. And Lilly, going into Saturday's Tennis State Championships, looked nearly unbeatable. She hadn't lost a match all season long, but this defending 5A state champion had a worthy competitor in Fairview sophomore Quinn Berthold, who won the first set with what Lilly has called her "sick forehand." Is that right? Lilly, however, was able to battle back and claim her second state title. Congratulations, ladies. Come take a picture? Athletics is an amazing opportunity for students to learn about sportsmanship, hard work, and teamwork. A lot of times, we think about school rivalries, but in the case of this year's gymnastics champions, it was about bringing together student athletes from several BVSD schools to compete as one unified team. Will the BVSD gymnastics team come on up? Yeah! So while Broomfield hosted the gymnastics team for the district, it's composed from girls across the district. And let's have you... Do we have a microphone to do this, Aaron? Have everybody come up and introduce themselves, or should they roll through here? Okay, let's have everyone introduce themselves. So you can come here and then walk back around and make a line. Does that work?
Do I tell them to school info?
Yes, yes, that'd be great.
Alrighty. Hi, y'all. My name's Brenna, and I'm a senior at Centaurus High School.
Hi, I'm Mila, and I'm a junior at Centaurus High School as well.
Hi, I'm Kaia. I'm a freshman at Broomfield High School.
Hi, I'm Ava, and I'm a junior at Monarch High School.
Hi, I'm Maren. I'm a junior at Broomfield High School.
Hi, I'm Mia, and I'm a sophomore at Peak to Peak.
Hi, I'm Sophia, and I'm a senior at Fairview.
Hi, I'm Tori, and I'm a sophomore at Monarch.
Hi, I'm Sophie, and I'm a senior at Monarch.
Hi, I'm Anna. I'm a senior at Centaurus.
I'm Izzy, and I'm also a senior at Centaurus.
So this is Broomfield's third gymnastic team championship. First came in 1988. The last one was in 2012. Early this year, during the craziness of COVID, this team was the runner-up in the season's championship. Congratulations, Broomfield and BVSD's gymnastic team. So this next team that we're going to be celebrating is from Broomfield, but all the students are from Broomfield, right, Ginger?
Yes.
Just double-check with Mom Eagle. Okay, wonderful. This school's winter percussion team claimed the state championship this winter. Will the Broomfield winter percussion team come on in? Before you do, we're gonna have them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Jake. I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Eden. I'm also a senior.
Hi, I'm Emma. I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Grace, and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Alexis, and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Isaiah. I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Jenna. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Sam. I'm a senior.
I'm Afraen. I'm a junior.
I'm Odin. I am a senior.
I'm Ethan. I'm a freshman.
So as we know, the pandemic really created a lot of challenges, canceling competitions, and making it pretty tough for student percussionists to practice because they really can't take home some of the instruments they play, right? This year was a bit more normal. They were able to win the state championship. Congratulations once again to the Broomfield High Winter Percussion. All right, now we'll take a picture. Stu, Jenna. So while we're on the topic of Broomfield High and highlighting why it's a good day to be an Eagle, let's have Broomfield's girls soccer coach Jim Davidson come on up. In January, Jim traveled to Kansas City, Missouri to accept the 2021 National Coach of the Year Award. And this was for large public school's girls soccer teams from the United States Coaches Organization. It's a big honor, but not his first. He won the same award in 2015 for boys soccer and was voted to the CHASA 5A Coach of the Year in 2020, not to mention his team's numerous state championships. Jim is one of the most talented coaches I've ever had a chance to meet. Let's give Jim a huge round of applause. I'm excited to announce this next team that we'll be recognizing. Boulder Valley School District's schools are juggernauts when it comes to mountain biking. During the state championships in Durango back in October, 156 of 817 competitors were from Boulder County, including strong showings from Fairview and Monarch. But out of all of them, Boulder High School rose to the top to claim the state title. Will the Boulder High Mountain Biking Team come on up to be recognized? Hey, congratulations. We'll let everybody get up here and if you come in and just introduce your, just share your name.
Hi, my name's Chloe. I'm a junior.
My name, my name's Haley, and I'm a junior.
My name's Delia, and I'm a junior.
Hi, my name's Ella, and I'm a junior.
My name's Sophia, and I'm a junior.
I'm Lucy, and I'm also a junior.
My name's Ryan, and I am also a junior.
My name's Kalen, and I'm a freshman.
My name is Joseph, and I'm a senior.
My name is Chris, and I'm a coach.
My name is Alex, and I'm also a coach.
My name's Ben, and I'm the former head coach and the founder of the team.
My name is Tabitha Brown, and I am the team director of the Boulder High Mountain Bike Team. And this is a very small representation of what our team is. Last year, we had 144 riders on our team, and we're very proud to be a team for all, just as the Boulder High School motto is "A Place for All." We will take the kid who is learning how to ride a bike for the first time, and we will take the world-class athletes who have world domination aspirations. We, we love riding bikes, and that is the whole point of the Boulder Mountain Bike Team. We took 77 athletes to the state championship, and yeah, in the end, we certainly dominated. So it's our ninth state championship, and the league has only been around for 12 years. So congratulations. You guys are amazing.
Awesome. Thank you so much. She said it all. Let's take a picture. Congratulations. Now on to swimming. Fairview's girls swim team is another perennial powerhouse. We've had the team in our honor role a few times now. Unfortunately, it came up just short of another state championship this year, but a strong team again with a couple of outstanding state champions. Will Carolina Bank and Morgan Lutnak come on up? Caroline is this year's state champion in the 200-yard freestyle, and Morgan is the champion in the 50-yard freestyle. Congratulations. Congratulations to both of you. Proud of you. That's so great. Another big sport during the winter months is wrestling, and we had a couple of champions here from BVSD. Will Ryan Vigil and Cole Carlucci come on up? Ryan's from Brewfield High and won the 152-pound division, while Monarch's Cole Carlucci won the 182-pound category. Let's give him another round of applause. Congratulations. Well done. Great job, guys. Everybody having fun? All right, just double check. So we love this time of the year in the Boulder Valley School District and of course, later this week, we'll be celebrating all of our seniors. Hopefully, the weather won't be too bad. They take, and we'll be celebrating seniors as they take part in their respective commencement ceremonies. Additionally, this is the time of the year when we learn where all of our students are headed from here and what scholarships and awards they've earned as they wrap up high school. But at this point, I'd like to have all of our Betcher and National Merit Scholars come on up. If you all would like to come on up here. So this is the 70th anniversary of the prestigious Betcher Scholarship Program, which annually awards merit scholarships to Colorado's top high school seniors with the goal of keeping Colorado's brightest minds and most talented young learners in-state for their post-secondary years. A total of 50 graduating seniors have been named as Betcher Foundation Scholars across the state. We're proud to have two here in BVSD. Arianna McCarty and Amanda Miller, will you step forward? So Arianna goes to Centaurus and will be headed to CU Boulder next fall. And Amanda is from Broomfield High and will be going to Colorado State University. Congratulations. So now, as I call your names, step forward. These are our National Merit Scholars. Arianna. Alex Silver from Centaurus High School. Jackson Moody, Fairview High. Brown Busby of Peak From Peak To Peak. And Jessica Funk from Monarch High. These students were chosen from more than 15,000 outstanding finalists and have been judged to have the strongest combination of accomplishments, skill and potential for success in rigorous college studies. This is the 67th year that the National Merit Scholarships Program has been awarded and congratulations to each and every one of you. Let's give them all a round of applause for our BVSD Super Scholars. So a few years ago, Broomfield Heights Middle School began an effort to build a better climate within the school, but those efforts couldn't be contained by the school's walls. Will the team from Broomfield Heights Middle School No Place For Hate Team come on up? No Place For Hate is a nationwide program of the Anti-Defamation League aimed at improving school climate through anti-bias and bullying prevention education. At Broomfield Heights Middle School, it's the students that lead the effort, spreading awareness in the community about acceptance, bullying prevention, and speaking out. Well, a few months ago, students and staff from the school were invited to share about their efforts to Broomfield City Council and there was no question the council left incredibly impressed. They decided to create a proclamation that April 12th would be No Place For Hate Day in the city and county of Broomfield. And so we're here to celebrate our No Place For Hate Team from Broomfield Heights Middle School. If you all wouldn't mind coming through, introducing yourself, what grade you're in, and then we'll give you another round of applause and take a picture. How does that sound?
I'm Alexis and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Sage and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Rachel and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Paula Kaufman. I'm teacher and co-sponsor of No Place For Hate with Christina McCann.
Hi, and I'm Erin Hinkle. I'm the principal.
And so last, but certainly not least tonight, we'd like to celebrate the outstanding academic achievements of one of our elementary schools. Will Principal Chris Baston and the team from High Peaks Elementary come on up? Since 1982, the U.S. Department of Education has been recognizing schools across the nation based on their overall academic excellence through its Blue Ribbon Schools Program. This year, High Peaks Elementary in Boulder was named a Blue Ribbon School. Incredible, incredible achievement. High Peaks was one of only six Colorado schools to receive the honor this year. And as U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona pointed out in his release, "It was a particularly outstanding achievement given the global pandemic." Quote, "In the face of unprecedented circumstances, you found creative ways to engage, care for, protect, and teach our children." It's important to mention, this is a process that takes several years and started with former Principal Jeannie Taneki before she retired and Chris took the baton and brought it home. So congratulations, High Peaks. Feels like that went too fast. I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. I want to thank all of our honorees, all of our parents, our community members, friends who are here to support you. What an amazing group of folks to honor and celebrate. So one last round of applause. Thank you all so much for being here. We have some refreshments left over. Please grab some on the way out. Thank you all so much. Have a great night. Thanks for being here.
I'd like to call to order this meeting, this special meeting work session of the Boulder Valley School District and Board of Education. Laura, could you please call the role?
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. So at tonight's meeting, we have one information item and I'll turn it over to Dr. Anderson to do the introductions. Thank you.
Thank you, Board President Gettart, members of the board. We're excited to have Sam Messier and team here to talk, to continue our conversation around this idea of community schools. We brought this topic to the board originally in the fall. We had shared with you at that point, we're going to do a little more investigation, bring it back to you in the spring. And so here to present, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Messier.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, President Gettart, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here to give you another update on the community schools framework for wraparound services as they can be provided to students and families. I do have a team here with me this evening, so I'm gonna, before we get started, let them introduce themselves.
Good evening. I'm Jovita Schiffer, the Extended Learning and Community Programs Manager.
Good evening. I'm Wanda Pellegrini Caldas and I'm the Family Services Manager for the City of Boulder. And among other things, I oversee the Family Resource Schools FRS program.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Farren. I'm the Director of Health Services here at BVSD.
Good evening. I'm Ariker Zonkesser, Coordinator of Family Partnerships.
Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. So just as we get started, I wanted to give everyone a quick reminder about vocabulary. So the term "community schools" can be a little bit confusing in BVSD because we do use it to describe multiple things. One of those is the community schools framework that we're going to be discussing this evening, which is the model that was developed by the Learning Policy Institute. So that framework is what we'll be talking about chiefly today, not to be confused with our fabulous Department of Community Schools, which is very capably run by Renee Williams and encompasses all the other programs that you see on this slide. So just a reminder that when we spoke to you back in October, we talked about how this community schools framework is a model that has broad support at the national level, including from a number of national organizations, which include the National Education Association, which has described community schools as providing an evidence-based pathway to lifting all students and the communities they live within. So how do they do that? They do that by always putting students at the center, by offering powerful learning, integrated supports, and authentic family engagement, by relying on stakeholder engagement that's important for building relational trust, strengthening an equity focus and supporting continuous improvement. And when all of those things work together, it results in college, career, and community-ready students, strong families, and healthy communities. So what makes the community schools framework unique and uniquely successful? It's the integration of the four key pillars or features that have to work together symbiotically in order for the model to really ensure that students and families thrive. The one that most people associate with the community schools framework is integrated student supports. So that's the provision of things like medical, dental, mental health services within the school facility. But that's not the only pillar. It has to be paired with expanded and enriched learning time opportunities for students, active family and community engagement, and collaborative leadership practices. And those four pillars together are what really combine to give the community schools their power. So one of the things that I want to call out that we didn't talk as much about last time is the importance of coordination of those services and resources. You can have a lot of services and resources, but it's the coordination of those and the strategic deployment of those that helps to ensure that the resources and services are actually equitably distributed across the district and accessible to the students and families who actually need those services the most. And at this point, I am going to turn it over to Jovita Schiffer.
Thank you. So at our last session in October, when we met with you and first introduced the idea of community schools, you made some requests for us to look into a few things. The first one was to investigate school-based activities and programs already in place in BVSD schools that address the four pillars of the wraparound community schools model. And we did complete that. And you will hear more about that here today. You also asked us to conduct a needs assessment with families and we are scheduling that for the fall. We really want to be thorough and make sure that we understand the needs and perspectives of parents when we do that. And so that is planned for this fall. And then you also asked that we do a needs assessment with staff, which we also completed. I personally interviewed several principals at high support and targeted schools to better understand their needs. So how is BVSD already implementing the activities within the pillars? Today, you will hear about how FRS and City of Boulder is providing services as well as our BVSD health services. You'll also hear about extended learning that BVSD is offering in schools, family engagement, and also about collaborative leadership that is already going on. Just as an overview of some of what you will hear more about today, our Family Resource Schools in Boulder currently have five FRS schools in Boulder. They serve over 900 students within those five schools between extended learning programs and also FRS programs. We also have our Families and Educators Together programs, FETs teams at 14 schools, which is 25% of BVSD schools. And we have two 21st Century Community Learning Centers, one at Alicia Sanchez Elementary and one at Emerald Elementary. Combined, those two schools served 420 students this year who attended after-school programs. And now I'm going to turn it over to Wanda.
The FRS program has strong alignment to the four pillars of the community schools model with focus on all areas of child development and the whole family with the goal of reducing barriers to academic achievement by providing support services to the students and their families. FRS provides integrated student support services in the form of basic needs case management, which includes financial assistance, resources, and referrals to community agencies to ensure students and their families can remain housed, healthy, and connected. Specifically, these are provided as financial assistance for rent and/or mortgage, food, clothing, and other basic needs, including assistance for acquiring and/or paying for utilities and technology. That also includes support for basic and specialized healthcare in the form of vision, dental, and medical. And in addition, FRS provides counseling services onsite through mental health partners. FRS supports expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities through onsite before and after-school programs with focus on individualized tutoring, mentoring, and academic classes. As well through these programs, FRS offers each student busing and a healthy snack and also enrollment support for childcare, summer and extracurricular programs, and scholarship opportunities as well. In collaboration with each of the schools and BVSD, and in particular with the FET teams and other community organizations, FRS offers opportunities for parents, including workshops, activities, and classes that encourage leadership development and facilitate networking within the school community. So that's things like helping parents connect with other parents, with the school staff, with BVSD staff and administrators. These opportunities also include informational and educational sessions on current events and hot topics. So things like COVID, how to submit for open enrollment, how to enroll my child in school, things like that, financial and language literacy, and other topics that parents request. Finally, FRS embraces the collaborative leadership and practices through participation on and support of school and parent committees and connecting the school community, the parents and staff to other community organizations that support learning and family stability. Thank you. And I will pass it to Stephanie.
Hello, good evening. Again, Stephanie Farren with Health Services. So the role of health services really is to ensure that students are healthy and are ready to learn. And we know that out-of-school factors significantly affect the health and learning opportunities of students. And that can include dental, unmet dental needs, vision needs, hearing needs, oftentimes a result of not having medical insurance or just not even knowing how to access the care that's available. We know that students who do not have these basic health needs met just can't take advantage of all the things that we have here at BVSD to offer them. Our Health Services Team works to address these needs through a number of supportive services. You are more familiar probably with our school nurses who are every day in our schools working with students who have health needs. They educate teachers and other school staff on how to care for them, make sure that their needs are met and that they're safe at school and able to learn. We also have a school Medicaid program and that school Medicaid program funds a number of things to support students with unmet health needs. One of those is a nursing case manager who does care management and care coordination. She is a bilingual nurse. Her name is Alicia. She's-
She's pretty incredible. She assists families in accessing resources, both within BVSD and with outside partners. She works with our school nurses, with the community liaisons, with the FRS coordinators. She works with our McKinney-Vento staff. And then she also does some work with the FET teams and goes out and does education for groups as well as individuals. One of the things that she does, she usually works with anywhere from 200 to 300 families a year, and I have one story that kind of illustrates how complicated some of this work can be. She recently was working with a family who had a student, they're a monolingual Spanish-speaking family, they have a student who accesses special education services and has some pretty significant orthopedic needs and is seen at Children's Hospital. So the family had some data wrong on their Medicaid application, so the Medicaid did not cover the services that they were getting. It resulted in them getting a very large bill for a wheelchair and some orthotics and different things that the student needed. So Alicia worked with that family and was then able to connect with the hospital, connect with Boulder County, make sure that those errors were fixed. She worked with the physical therapists and the teachers at school to make sure that they understood how to utilize the equipment, and that she was able to reach out to Sister Carmen, who could provide rental assistance to the family, thus freeing up some money that they could use to pay for some of the unmet health needs. So this kind of care coordination can be really intensive and very cumbersome, and having somebody that can speak that language and go back and forth, and especially speak the language of the families can be really incredibly powerful. In addition to case management, our school Medicaid program has been providing dental health preventative services. We've been doing that for a number of years this year. We partnered with Clinica Family Health to provide extensive preventative screenings, and they're doing not only screenings but also fluoride applications and sealants. They saw about 400 students this year in six schools. They did a really fantastic job with follow-up, and we've had six more schools that are anxious to enroll in that program next year. We additionally support students who have additional needs that are identified, and as you can see from the slides, we had, out of those 400 kiddos, about 95% of them met either moderate to high risk for dental cavities. If you've ever had a cavity that goes uncared for, you know that can be incredibly painful. Again, reducing a student's ability to really access school and participate, and can affect their mental health significantly as well. So the school Medicaid program provides vouchers, so we do provide some funding assistance for students who have unmet dental needs. And then we have a community partnership called Adopt a Smile that was really developed through Alicia and some of the partnerships that she made in the community. Those are dentists that donate their time, and it's usually around $10,000 a year of completely donated time and resources to our students as well. There we go. In addition to dental screenings, we do hearing and vision screenings at schools. Hearing and vision screening is a required screening here in Colorado, and we screen over 17,000 students every year. We have a significant number of students who need referrals or get a referral for more intensive follow-up, either more intensive eye exams or for glasses. Doing the follow-up on those referrals can be really difficult and time-consuming. Our health room paras and nurses do some of that work. We have a team of screeners who do some of that work as well, but we usually end up with only about 50% of the students that have been referred out that we know have actually gotten services. We also have Medicaid funds and additional resources for students who need services that aren't covered under their insurance. We participate in a voucher program. We access funds through a community trust, and we also, excuse me, have some funds through the school Medicaid program. If you have glasses, you know glasses are, insurance will only cover them once a year. Oftentimes kiddos will lose them or break them, or who knows what they do with them, and so we provide a lot of additional glasses for students throughout the year that way. And then finally, I just want to address mental health supports. Student support services really oversees most of the mental health work that is happening here in BVSD, although Health Services does collaborate with them, and we really do work together to provide mental and emotional health support. So our student support services oversees our school counselors, of course. They also oversee our mental health partner prevention interventionists that are located at 12 schools. And we currently have, I believe, 11 mental health advocates that work to do more individual and group counseling services for students who are identified. And then Health Services actually supplements this work through specially-trained nurses that are at all of our high schools. They provide substance use, education, and intervention. And really, all of our nurses do this work in some form or fashion. All of our staff is trained in youth mental health first aid, and we work really collaboratively and closely with school counselors because we know that a lot of students, especially in younger grades, will show up to the health room with headaches or stomachaches, things that aren't necessarily, that are more emotional, that are coming through as more physical ailments. So we work very closely to make sure that those students are connected with support, and then do a lot of referring out for students who need more in-depth services. And as you know, services, mental health services, although we have a lot of providers here in our community, are very hard to find. There's usually very long wait times. The cost for those can be really high as well. So without somebody to really help coordinate that and help families kind of walk through that process, it can be a very daunting experience. And I think I'm going back to Jovita.
For expanded and enriched learning opportunities, these are programs that are before and after school, weekend, and summer programs that enhance the school day learning and provide opportunities for additional academic support, as well as enriching experiences for our students. Currently, we have programs offered by the Community Schools Department. They have the lifelong learning after-school enrichment program, where they serve over 9,000 students. They provide online learning through BVSD Online. They have childcare programs, both serving the school-aged children. They have preschool enrichment. They have early connections. They also provide community use of our spaces so that the community can come in and provide additional programs for our schools. Most of their programs are fee-based, and they do offer scholarships. We also have our 21st Century Community Learning Centers. These centers are currently at Alicia Sanchez Elementary and Emerald Elementary. They are funded by a 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. That grant is intended to help close opportunity gaps for students. We had 420 students attend after-school programs this year in both schools combined. And our enrichment and academic intervention classes after school really expose students to enriching experiences that they might not otherwise have access to. In this photograph, we actually have a program that comes from CU Boulder's School of Education, where they bring pre-service teachers for a practicum in our class, and they do STEM programs. And so here, we have some CU professors at Sanchez showing the children how to make stop-motion movies, which they loved. That was one of the favorite activities for our students. In my interviews with several principals, I had at least six say that they're very interested in having similar programs at their schools as well. And so I think next is Ari.
Well, it's a pleasure to share with you some of the recent efforts around deepening our connections with community partners, and then I'll share in a little more depth about the evolution of our FET teams at the 14 schools. So the first piece I wanted to share with you are the new Community in BVSD Resources for Families, which is both a webpage and a folder with printed resources for families. We've known for, I think, years that families would greatly benefit from having an easy-to-access kind of one-stop-shop of resources, both in terms of opportunities for their involvement and leadership in BVSD, as well as a pretty comprehensive list of community resources. And we created basically 10 thematic community partner documents ranging from housing to food support, and those were distributed to all schools. I hand-delivered them to all 56 of our principals, and community liaisons and principals have been sharing them with the community. So that's something that hopefully will meet the need in the wake of the fires, in the wake of the pandemic, in terms of families knowing where to go for supports that would be useful. Also wanted to share, we have 20 K-12 community liaisons, and each month I bring guest speakers that are some of our closest community partners, and the aim of that is to build stronger bridges between our schools and those community partners, with liaisons being real champions in that effort. And for instance, in the last two months, we had Representatives from Parks and Open Space, Jewish Family Services around mental health support, Bridging the Digital Divide, BVSD Transportation: Impact on Education, and A Precious Child were the guest speakers at our March and April meetings. And then the third piece I wanted to share in terms of community partners is around something new and exciting that Marinella Manero, who's the liaison at NuVista, and I have been partnering with two colleagues at the Boulder County Healthy Youth Alliance Office, and that is creating a family hub where essentially over the last six months, we've been visioning and putting the foundation in place for what we're calling currently, it was initially Family University, now we're calling it Instituto para Forte Limiento Familiar, which in English is the Institute for Family Growth, Family Strengthening. And the goal is to provide for families a place where they can learn about events and resources, both within BVSD and throughout Boulder and Broomfield County, so they can go to one place and know about existing opportunities. It's also aimed at helping all of our community partners and the events they want to include BVSD parents in, to not be accidentally competing or overlapping so that there's that calendar, as well as a collection of videos that parents can watch from home and a pathway for their own adult learning. So that's something that's in development that I'm excited to share with you. And then finally, I want to share with you in a little more depth some of the growing work of our FET teams. You can see on the slide the current 14 schools and then the three schools that are on the horizon as new teams for next year. I continue to learn after coaching the leaders at all of our FET teams and attending hundreds of meetings in recent years, that in order to reduce our opportunity gaps and build stronger ties with our families, we need to discover from our families our biases, the barriers that we're unintentionally putting up, and our blind spots, and that they have to feel safe enough to share honestly. And it's our educators' humility in that space that sets the foundation for them to share honestly. So we had five new teams this year, 14 now in total. Every FET team is different and takes on its own flavor, but there are four things that really are common threads across the 25% of schools that have a team. Creating a trusting space for historically underrepresented families to share their experiences, centering parent voices and engaging in meaningful dialogue that leads to mutual learning, really helping educators reshape the ways that they think about fostering connections and understanding the experience of our families, especially culturally linguistically diverse parents. And finally, deepening relationships, and at the same time, taking on action projects that lead to systemic change within the school and ultimately create a more inclusive, collaborative, and equitable school. So just to make that a little bit more concrete and briefly share with you a few concrete examples that have unfolded at a few of our schools this year. At Eisenhower, we heard from families in the fall that they hadn't heard from their teachers, many of them as Spanish-speaking parents, had not had communication with their child's teacher, and they also did not feel like they were heard much in conferences. It felt like they were mostly listening to teachers. And so what we did as a result was we expanded parent-teacher conference time for any family that had an interpreter to make them more equitable. And we also, I did a professional development 20-minute session with the staff on how to have a more relationship-centered, culturally-responsive parent conference. And we also trained the staff on a new app that allows educators to text families and receive a text back, and it's interpreted for them immediately, and this is something that hopefully will grow to more and more schools. And just to share with you two parent voices after that work, one mom said, "We got to talk more, and we had more time to ask questions, and there was greater clarity between the two of us about my child's academic progress, his behavior, and his homework." Another mom said, "Sometimes we have doubt or fear about asking questions because someone else is waiting outside, and then we leave and stay with our doubts because there isn't time." So I really liked these last conferences we did in February. Couple other quick examples, at Mesa, parents who have felt like they could build stronger ties because they don't live in the neighborhood and for other reasons, the parents recommended positive phone calls, and the principal, within six weeks, made that happen. The whole staff is given an hour a month where they're making those. They're also looking at revamping Back to School Night for next August, where instead of the sit-and-get of listening to the teacher, the teacher's going to record that part, which is valuable, send it home digitally, and they're going to use that time for actual relationship-building between parents in the classroom as well as with the teacher. And a couple final examples, Lewisville Middle School's done some really wonderful work this year. Student interviews with Latino students, exploring what are the factors inhibiting their participation in after-school sports and what would, and other activities, and what would increase their capacity to participate. They also realized, as their FET team unfolded, that they hadn't, as the staff, built up enough trust with families. As the turnout was small, the second month, so they engaged in virtual home visits, and the next month, there were 13 parents instead of three. And they recently held a parent panel where three of the moms from the team shared about their experiences as Latina moms over the years at the school, and the staff got a lot of insight into how they can better partner with families. And last example, just to share one high school one, Centaurus, this spring really took a deep dive into looking at attendance and engagement, and they looked at the data with 27% of students at Centaurus being Latino and comprising 52% of students who were chronically absent. What did parents think about how that could be tackled? And so parents and teachers got into some really problem-solving conversations around that. So to conclude, just want to share a few quotes directly from our parent leaders and our principals at two schools, just so you can get a little sense of how this work is leading to really deeper trust that leads to actionable change. So one mom said at Boulder High, "I just want to say I'm so grateful to have a FET team here. I've had children in this district for 15 years, and for those of us that have been at schools without FET, we know what it can be like and are so content there's a team here. Without FET, we feel like we have no voice, no opinion, no value. When my daughter graduated from Manhattan Middle School and I had to say goodbye to that FET team, I was so relieved to know there was a FET team here. I knew that we would be valued and that our children would be seen as important." And another mother shared, "It was very difficult for me to feel trust with the teachers. FET's broken down the barrier between mothers and educators. As a result of the team, many parents have had the chance to bring forth their voices and look for opportunities that before they feared to ask about or pursue." And lastly, just to hear from two of our principals who've been really strong leaders on their teams. This comes from Brady Stroop over at Eisenhower, and he shared with me last month, "FET's been an amazing thing. I couldn't have done it on my own. I don't have the resource or expertise to know how to do this. It's been a dream come true for me. I'm getting out of it exactly what I wanted, how to engage all of my communities. Their feedback has been so helpful. Like last week, when I asked them about Back to School Night, I've always been confused about how to maximize engagement. I feel bad with Back to School Night every year." Every year I wonder, how do I do this? Do I have an interpreter? Will families come? Last time Ruth and I did a separate meeting and covered a lot of the topics, but it's not equal. It seems like people were comfortable, but it didn't feel very inclusive." And then, he added, "It's helpful to talk to a group and ask, what do you want? How can we ensure that you feel comfortable to ask questions and we meet your needs? Instead of how can you adapt to our expectations or deal with what we want?" And lastly, just from John McCloskey over at Centennial, "Through FET, we're learning who our families are, and they're learning who the teachers are via our stories rather than our titles. This has reduced many of the stereotypes we all put on each other, and has allowed us to see our collective desire to do the right thing for all children. Thanks for this opportunity to share some of the ways we're deepening partnerships with families," and I'll turn it back to Dr. Messier.
As the Chromebook is making its way back to me, I just want to thank Ari for personally delivering copies of those folders that he developed of Resources for Families in both English and Spanish to all of our schools. And Ari, I think we can get copies of those for the board members. Yes, awesome. All right, so the last of the four pillars that we want to talk about is collaborative leadership and practices. So, how do you bring everyone to the table to bring all of these facets of a community schools framework together to really both address needs and leverage the assets of students and families that are in our schools? So, in the community schools framework, they really define this as each school site or location bringing together the stakeholders to build a community of professional learning, build collective trust, and shared responsibility of that site-based leadership. And that includes collaboration on setting goals and focus areas for each school community. So, we do have a few things at the district level that we're implementing at the system level that I think address this. One of those is our Strategic School Improvement Process. So, this is the process that we use to coach our schools through the development of their unified improvement plans at the site level. These are all based on starting with a review of their data, and then developing goals from that, which then lead to strategies and action plans, which of course, need to engage parents through their school accountability committees. Second, we're very fortunate to have built-in teacher collaboration time. The community schools framework actually calls out built-in teacher collaboration time as one of the really key and essential components of a strong community schools model. And finally, a shared decision-making process. We've had a long tradition of shared decision-making processes in our district for how we engage staff to make decisions that impact our schools and communities. So, one of the things, bringing this all together, to summarize, is that it probably looks like we have a lot of stuff going on already. We just spent time describing a lot of initiatives across all four pillars, and you might be asking yourself, do we need more? And I'll go back to the comment I made at the beginning, which is that having the resources and opportunities available is not the same thing as ensuring that those resources are actually distributed equitably throughout the district, and ensuring that the people who need those resources can access them. So, just to cite an example, you heard about Family Resource Schools, which is a very successful model for incorporating all four of those pillars, only available in the city of Boulder because it's sponsored by the city of Boulder. So, we're not able to provide that model in schools outside the city. So, whatever we choose to do, wherever we move forward with this, we want to be able to measure the impact of implementing community schools framework. And clearly, we would want to tie this to our strategic plan metrics, and how we can leverage a community schools framework or model to improve those metrics. We could potentially impact any of the metrics that you see on this list. In the spirit of collaborative leadership practices, we hope to include in our conversation with families in the community, a conversation about which metrics the community at each site defines as the most important to them, that they really want to see us move the dial on. So, some possible proposed next steps. Community Assessment of Needs is something that you asked us for the last time we met. We are going to go ahead and schedule that for next fall. We would like to identify a third-party facilitator to help us with that. We believe a third-party facilitator could be really helpful in community needs assessments where we can get a really objective sense of what it is that the community wants. We also are looking to potentially form an advisory committee to help guide development. Of course, we're going to need to determine a site or sites where we might want to implement this, and what site-specific facility needs might be associated with that. We'll need to think about how we can best leverage our existing resources and partners, and explore potential funding mechanisms that might be available to us. So, at this point, I and my team would be happy to take any of your questions.
Yeah, I don't have a question, just a comment. Thank you for all of this. And prior to my board service, I was part of the small group that brainstormed about what the FET teams would be, what they'd be called, and it's just, it's awesome to see them in so many schools, so just wanted to put that plug out there. Thank you for doing that.
Kitty, and then Beth.
Well, I will say ditto to what Stacy just said. This is a great amount of work, and it's wonderful to see that we have all these things available to our students. And something I've been concerned about for a while is not being able to have Family Resource Schools outside of Boulder. And have we approached any of the other cities or towns?
At this point, no, we have not. So, I think we're very early on in this process. I think as we think about what it might look like to, if we decide we do want to move forward, for example, and try to build out a full community schools model somewhere in Lafayette, we would want to start with that community needs assessment to really understand what it is that families would like to see in terms of services, so that then we can approach not only the city, but other potential partners.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a perfect segue into some of my questions and thoughts. First of all, I want to echo what everyone else has said. Excellent work, and as someone on boots-on-the-ground, I've been having great conversations with my administrators around this exact topic, so it was so timely. I heard about the Talking Points app, which sounds like it's been a fairly effective tool for translating and communicating between education, between the schools and the families, so that's really great. But you were just saying, brings me to one of my questions, Dr. Messier, can you tell us a little bit more about the family needs assessment and what that will look like, just for anyone that's curious? Like, how will we be recruiting members to join, and what will kind of the data points look like for that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, I do think that we want to look at recruiting an external partner to help us with this. One of the partners that we've considered, certainly not the only partner, but one of the partners that we've thought about is Growing Up Boulder, that uses a very participatory approach to engaging families and children in thinking about what the possibilities are for what could happen in something like a community school site. I think that you bring up a really great point, which is ensuring that when we do recruitment for the people who are going to be involved, the participants in that process, we want to be as inclusive as we possibly can. And so, we'll want to work through some of our existing mechanisms, like our FET teams, and work with our school staff to ensure that we are getting a really representative group of families from the school site that we want to work in.
All right, thanks, Dr. Messier. And with that, a little, one more question. Can you tell us a little bit more about how we'll measure impact? I heard you say it will likely be site-based. Maybe just elaborate on that a bit more, please?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, measuring impact is one of those things that, you know, I love data, and so I love to collect data, and I love to see how we're doing on actually meeting the goals that we set for ourselves. You know, I think that we're really fortunate in that we've developed a really strong set of strategic plan metrics tied to our long-term goals and long-term outcomes that are in our strategic plan. So, things like access to acceleration, and things like increasing the proportionality of discipline, patterns in our discipline. So, those things I think are reflective of an equitable environment and conducive climate in a school that supports student outcomes. Ultimately, we also want to look at increasing the proportionality of the actual student achievement and growth results that we get, because that's really the power that's possible with a community schools framework or model, is that we can address some of those out-of-school factors that sometimes create barriers to students being able to learn. So, if we can take care of some of those, I think our hope, I think the hope of everyone here, is that we can start to narrow some of those achievement and growth gaps that we see between some of our subgroups.
Thanks so much.
Did you want to add something?
I would like to add something. I've also, community schools is a network across the country, and it's an organization, and so I have been speaking with other districts, and in some places, it's the government that actually runs these programs. And so, we also have access to other people who have done it or are successful, and can also share their best practices, their, the things they wish they had done differently. Even in Colorado, there's Aurora Public Schools has a community schools program, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
One other point, Sam, is that, you know, as we investigate this model, right, what often happens in community schools is you have partnership organizations, right, who will provide funding or services, and at that point, we may kind of, might get to a place where we co-design some metrics, so folks that are investing understand the return on their investment. But that might be site-specific, and depending upon the partnerships we're able to forge after we do the community needs assessment.
And we'll have the result of that community needs assessment around winter break time? I'm assuming that will just go through the fall, or?
That would be my hope, that we would have them for you by winter break time.
I just want to say, thanks for working on expanding these FETs teams across our school district. How are we approaching creating FETs teams in some of the other schools that don't yet have them? And are we sharing best practices that are coming out of these, these teams with schools that are currently participating with, had that have FETs teams in schools across our district, to make sure that those opportunities are scattered throughout?
Thanks, great, good question. The deep work is truly happening at those 14 schools, through NEO and some New Educator Orientation, some other pieces. Best practices in terms of school-family partnerships are getting out to all schools, and I know a hope is, the family partnerships component of the strategic plan is on the horizon, and so, Dr. Messier, and I've had a number of conversations this year about how do we take all that we've learned from the 14 FET teams and make it more systemic? So, on that level, there's work still to be done in those other 42 schools. There's going to, we're going to need to find pathways in, and I would say, you know, Talking Points and some of the other efforts that we're focused on are reaching a lot of the non-FET schools. So, there are some best practices that are spreading, but hopefully, as part of the strategic plan work, we'll find some pathways to really deepen the work at the other schools over the next year or two. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much for this presentation. It's pretty comprehensive, and I know that a lot of work went into it. The possible proposed next steps, I'm looking at the determining, or what is it, consider how to best leverage existing resources and partners. When you talk about partners, who are you talking about in terms of trying, do you have any idea of what you're looking for in terms of partners?
So, that's a great question, and I'll go back to, I think that we have to start with a community needs assessment, so that we can really identify what the focus areas that we're going to try to build out within a specific site might be. At that point, we'd really want to recruit specific partners that can help us address those needs that have been identified by the community. So, for example, if our community comes back and identifies mental health supports as the primary need, their most important thing, that they're going to prioritize, then of course, we would want to try to recruit partners that can support us in that area of mental health. But we may discover that our families in our community may have other needs, and that they may have different priorities than we think at this point. So, I think we'll really want to be guided by that, and as we discover what the needs are, ensure that we're reaching out comprehensively to discover the partners that are available in the community, not just the ones that we know about, but maybe some of the ones that we don't know about too, so that we can have a fair and open process for how we recruit those folks.
And Kitty, you asked the question around, have we reached to other communities for FRS? And I believe that when Doris Candelari was the principal at Sanchez Elementary School, she did reach out to the city of Lafayette. They didn't have the resources to support at that time. She created a wonderful mechanism, and created her own Family Resource School there at Sanchez Elementary School, utilizing other different types of funding sources, but that has been tried, and I think we need to do something more with reaching out to some of our other municipalities, especially Lafayette, because I think they have resources now. The question that I have in terms of, Jovida, you mentioned you have interviews with principals, and you mentioned that they all, some of them want to see similar services, or they want a program, they want a program in their schools. Can you be a little bit more specific in terms of what the services that these particular, if you got to that point, if these particular principals mentioned?
So, we discussed the four pillars, and I asked them questions around what they were doing in their schools for each pillar, and what do they, what would they like to add anew or increase? And so, many of them really, it was different for each school, but many were interested in the after-school programs, the enrichment and tutoring, and parent engagement as well.
And there's a lot of stuff in this slide presentation in terms of what's already out there, and some that we do in-house, and some that we don't do in-house. The question that I have, especially with the ones that we do in-house, is have we evaluated what we do in-house, and are we ineffective in what we're doing in-house? I'm sure that there's metrics developed already, and I'm really curious about FET. And I know that you're in 14 schools, and you're doing this, you're doing that, and stuff like that, but what's the end result? What are we getting from FET?
Thanks for the question. One of the things this spring that's been powerful has been in terms of data. On Saturday, we held a FET Parent Leadership Summit, and we had parents from all 14 schools, and that was both anecdotal as well as some real metrics. So, I would say in terms of outcomes that we're getting, we're seeing systemic change within these schools, a concrete change in practices. We're also seeing a growing sense of trust and connection, both between parents, this real strong network, a school like Pioneer, seven different countries represented on their, the parent side of their FET team, so a sense of deep connection, which families are hungering for after the two years cloistered away in the pandemic. So, I think that relational piece, but as I was referencing from some of the school examples, whether it's changes to conferences, whether it's changes to the ways that staff are truly getting to know families better through home visits, it's basically a vehicle for them to embed a lot of the best practices, and listen to families to know about how to take down barriers. And many other neighboring districts have reached out with interest in learning more about it, so I think the power of it is having some clear ripples.
Thanks for that. And are we going to get some kind of report on some of that with specifics at some point in the future?
Yes. Yeah, I would say the two pieces, one is the Parent Leadership Summit. We're going to put together a report over the summer. We're going to put together a report over the summer so that all of the insights and highlights from parents will be shared. I'm also sharing in Los Angeles in a few weeks about FET at the National Conference on Community Schools and Family Engagement and can share those slides with all of you just to go into a little more depth about the work that's unfolding in each of those schools.
Great, I'd like to see that. And on the leveraging existing resources and partners, just one concern that I have with community schools and, because I know the nonprofit world out there in our communities very, very well, and I know that some of the nonprofits are doing some of the stuff that's in the pillars here. And my hope is that you do reach out to these particular nonprofits as leveraging some of the stuff that they're doing so that we can find that out and also so that we don't put the school district in competition with these nonprofits.
Absolutely, thank you for that.
I was just going to say, I agree. You know, the idea of a community school model is really locking arms with our community to solve problems, right? It's not us trying to solve problems, them trying to solve problems, stepping on each other's toes. It's coordinating. I think when done really, really well, we tap into the talents and existing resources in our community. So, what I would expect is as we do a needs assessment, there's also a scan of what exists, right? I mean, ultimately, you know, there should be, should be kind of a matrix of the needs and who in the community provides it and how do we work on building the synergies together as a community to solve these problems together.
Just one last comment since Wanda's here. Family Resource Schools are doing a great job, okay? And I remember one time when the Board of Education did challenge Family Resource Schools because we were providing and we are providing some matching funds to whatever the city puts in. And the challenge was, or at least the question was, what are the metrics for Family Resource Schools? Because they do have objectives and stuff like that. How are we, how do we know that we're accomplishing what we said we're going to be doing with Family Resource Schools? Because I think it's critical that we find that out because it is a model. And I think if we can show everybody that Family Resource Schools is doing a wonderful job, and I'm sure they are, I think it would lend a lot to the community school discussion that we'll be having in the future.
Just briefly, thank you first of all, but I would briefly comment on that, that we do collect our own metrics. And of course, we're looking at family stability, which is one of the main components of our program. But we would be happy to share, obviously, as part of this, what we measure. And of course, we already share our data and would, you know, continue to do that. But also, we do pretty in-depth collaboration with all of the partners in the community. It's, you know, echoing what you said, it's just not possible for us to do it on our own or the district to do it on our own. And it really is a community schools model and a family resource model, like that really depends on being out there, reaching out to the whole community and bringing that to the school and vice versa.
Kathy, I know that the state legislature did something around community schools. I don't know where, did they get that bill passed or not? But it's, but it's a totally different story, I think.
I don't think there's any money from the state on this. Anything else? Any, Lisa, did you have anything?
No, thank you. I think it's been well-covered. I appreciate the passing of the laptop as well as all the work that's being done.
So, I have a couple of questions. One for you, Rob. The last slide talks about explore potential funding mechanisms. I don't remember seeing anything in our budget about community schools. So, are they going to be doing this without any budgetary support or how are we going to support their work going forward?
Well, I think that we need to know, you know, the idea of exploring potential funding mechanisms, I think is really getting into that, exploring partnerships, exploring grants, exploring, you know, multi-year opportunities within the philanthropic community here in Boulder. We feel like that, you know, this idea checks a lot of boxes off, you know, through a lot of organizations. So, to the extent that we've had staffing and we've had some support around this, you know, the goal and idea wouldn't be to put money towards community schools next year because we're not even, not there yet outside of the programs that we highlighted for you today. But that bullet is to really highlight what would a part, an ongoing partnership look like that's a sustainable model?
And I would think though, as we explore those partnerships, they're going to be wondering what we're doing to partner with them financially. Do we have satisfactory answers for that or do we, is it a TBD that we tell them? I just get nervous.
Well, I just, I don't want to put, I hear what you're saying. I think that when we have those conversations, I think that, you know, today's presentation, one, we have some proposed next steps. What I would hope is to get a kind of a knot of heads that, yeah, that sounds like the right path moving forward, right? You know, we're reporting back to you all. So, once we get that, we can move forward. And then, and then the idea of if we, if we start to think about partnerships that we feel like could be beneficial where there's a high return on investment of dollars, we would invest, we could bring that back to you at mid-year or work that into next year's budget.
And then, this determining site-specific facility needs, I don't think there's anything in our proposed budget for the bond that would address any of that. Do you see that as being a significant lift or is that something that we could hopefully accommodate through our existing budget and facility planning?
Hard to say. I mean, it could be through a partnership. It could be through, you know, for example, if we need facility upgrades, that might be a partnership opportunity as well. I know that in other places that I've, that I've worked where, you know, you could set up a whole clinic through donations through a local hospital or a local health provider or you could set up, you know, depending upon the service that the community needs. I think the earliest you'd see budget requests are mid-year and then potentially even at the end of next year, depending on how fast the work moves forward.
There was a really inspiring article not too long ago in the Denver Post about the mental, sorry, the medical services that George Washington were doing with the community partnership. And so, you read stories like that and Sam's nodding her head, so I think she saw the article. It's been set up a lot because there was a really inspirational doctor who was spearheading a lot of it, which always helps. But it was just a really inspirational article to see what Denver was doing, at least at one school level around the mental, not just the mental health, but the health issues around George Washington that I thought was really encouraging and inspirational. And I just want to do a shout-out on Slide 26 because those of you who know me know that I like metrics that are not just test scores. So, it warmed my heart to see two other things in here under opportunity and equity and disproportionality that were not based on test scores, but ways that we could be looking at metrics and ways that we could be evaluating how we're going forward. I think that's really encouraging and things that our community partners, I think, are going, I mean, not to the exclusion clearly of achievement growth, but the other two areas, I think it's really important that we collect that data as well. So, so it's really exciting to see how far we've come and I wish we could fast-forward this, but I know there's a process to get this done. And so, I look forward to continuing to support. So, what do you need from the board right now, Rob, that we're going in the right direction? A thumbs up? I mean, what is it that you're hoping as a result of this from board members?
As long as all the questions are complete from the board, I mean, I'm getting the sense that we're on the right track. Go as fast, fast as you can, as always, right? Try to, try to go as fast as you can because we know that there's needs that our kids have, our community has, and we have an obligation to begin to be meeting those needs. And so, I think the team has heard the urgency around moving forward. I've heard you would like this to be on the board prioritization for next semester as a topic to bring back. So, we'll include that. And the hope would be that we would have some answers on next steps before we leave for winter break. That way, we can begin to be planning either mid-year budget requests or work those into the budget cycle if there is, if we need to do that.
I think what I'm hearing is towards the end of the semester for prioritization because you need time to do your need survey and all of that. So, is that an accurate summary for the board for where we are? I'm seeing a lot of head nodding, Rob.
That's what we needed.
And I think, I think as we all know, coming out of the pandemic, even though next year will be year two, it's still not going to be completely in our rearview mirror, which is why this work is so really important, I think, going forward and why there's still a sense of urgency to be able to accomplish this work. So, thank you. It was a really encouraging presentation and I'm hopeful that we can continue to be supportive of this work as we go forward. So, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
So, we have one action item. It's 5.01 personnel items. Is there a motion to approve our action item on personnel items?
So moved.
By Kitty, seconded by Nicole. Laura, can you call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, I think that's it for our work session for tonight. We have a very full agenda next week. So, I will, Kitty, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm just curious about the rescinded retirement that we just voted on. Is somebody going to retire and then change their mind or did we tell them you can't retire?
Typically, a rescinded retirement is somebody who puts in their paperwork for retirement but then decides that they want to stay.
Okay. Well, that's what I thought.
Meeting adjourned.